A little seasonal levity is not a bad thing. Good evening, before we call this meeting to order, we have two individuals who would like to do a presentation and Homewood's own Jay Roberson and Darius Holly with the Birmingham Iron, come forward.
We've got gifts for you, Mr. President. Spirit of Christ.
As long as they're under 25 bucks, we're perfectly okay.
That's $25 apiece, Attorney Kendrick.
If you get one for a lawyer, too.
You know, it's all right. Remember, we're a large group. Thank you. That's right, when you're late, you don't.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President, Limbaugh, and to the mayor in his absent mayor, McPrayer, to everyone that's present here. It's truly a pleasure to be back in the great city of Homewood. Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to greet you and your fellow council members today. I am Jay Roberson, Vice President of the Birmingham Iron, a new professional football team here in our city and throughout this region. We want to make sure the Birmingham Iron is a part of the fabric of the community. And what we mean by that, we want to make sure the iron is a part of every municipality within the region of Jefferson County, and we are out getting in touch with each and every city, municipality, mayor, city council members, to let you know about the Birmingham Iron. Everybody here was touched by those that worked in the iron, coal mines, and industry throughout this central Alabama region for many, many years. And that's what this football team is going to be about. Blue collar, hardworking, football team with great coaches like Tim Lewis, Joe Pendry, our general manager, one of our tailbacks, you know from University of Alabama, Trent Richardson, one of our quarterback, Blake Sims, defensive back, for those Auburn fans that are here, too, Chris Davis. So we're excited about the brand of football we're going to bring to the area. One thing I know about the city of Homewood, being a former old decrepit quarterback now, is that we love football in the city of Homewood.
We do.
Isn't that right?
We do.
Go Patriots. So we're excited about that, and we want to make sure, President Limbaugh, that we came before this body, and JJ, before you all, to make sure you all are aware about the Birmingham Iron. We're excited about it. We have football in February, so after this past weekend and the SEC Championship, and the excitement of bowl games in December and January, on into the Super Bowl, the latter part of January and February, rather, we'll start the Alliance of American Football League here in Birmingham. We ask you to come out and support us. We have very reasonably priced tickets, and I'm going to let Darius Holly, account executive, share a few things with you on the ticket prices with the Birmingham Iron.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you all for having me today, but like Jay said, we have very reasonable prices, starting at $15 per game, going up to $175 for our hospitality suite. So very reasonable, so if you want to look at season tickets, we have them for $75 to $875. So we can get everybody in there. We loving, we're selling out a lot of sections already, so please come get your tickets soon.
Any questions, thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have one question. So what was the thinking on that quarterback draft? Why did y'all handle it that way?
Well, of course, that falls under purview, our general manager, Joe Pendry and Coach Lewis, but we did, we're able, and I appreciate you, Mr. Higginbotham, asking that question, we're able to solidify two very good quarterbacks. We actually passed on our first pick for a reason, and we got a young man by the name of Luis Perez, who was a Texas A&M commerce, was a Harlan Hill Award winner, threw for over 5,000 yards in one single season, 46 touchdowns, so he must be doing something right. And then we've got the one that has the most touchdown passes, I think, at the University of Alabama, at least for right now, and that's Blake Sims, who's a very well-known quarterback. So I think the iron, you know, did a good job on the selection of quarterbacks for this upcoming inaugural season.
Mr. Chairman, I was just giving you a lot of time. When y'all passed on Blake Sims to start with, I thought, what in God's name are you guys doing? But what I also wanted to let you know, Mr. Roberson, I am paying attention. I am paying attention to the iron. I'm all for it.
Well, I need you to be a season ticket holder, wait. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
I know you have business to take care of with the city, and we just truly appreciate the city of Homewood. This is our team, this is this region's team, and hopefully you come out and support the Birmingham Iron. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Darius. We appreciate it, both of you. All right. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation. We are fortunate, there, come forward, Christian, to have one of our associate pastors at Trinity United Methodist Church, Christian chairs, and following the prayer, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me.
Can we bow our heads for a word of prayer? Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for another chance to approach your throne of grace, God. We thank you, God, for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. As we transition in this holiday season, I just pray for the city of Homewood. I pray for all our officials, dear Lord God, that you will be the God in light in all the decision-making. I pray for this meeting, I pray for any concerns, dear Lord God, that are brought up, that we'll be able to navigate them as a community, as a family, as one. Thank you for everything you're going to do and will do. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Christian. All right, roll call, please, Mr. Burgett.
Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Here. So we have a quorum. The next item would be the reading of the minutes from November 19th. Chair would welcome a motion for dispensing with that reading and approving said minutes.
Move.
Second.
All right, motion from Miss Smith, second from Miss Andrus. Any further discussion? If there is not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and that is unanimous. Okay, board vacancies, I think we have a few. Let me, there is, if I understand, Ward Two has a BZA opening, is that correct, Mr. Higginbotham?
I did need to confirm that with our city clerk, but that is what has been indicated to me by the person who holds this thing, so I assume that she knows when her term expires. Is that consistent with your information?
Yes, it's going to expire at the end of the year, and Beverly Booth, who holds that position, is asking she be reappointed when the nominations come out for that.
Well, she can certainly apply.
Yeah, apply.
Well, if it doesn't expire until the end of the year, perhaps we should wait to open that.
Right. And then, let's see, also openings to post is the Ward Four IDB and HDRA opening.
Yes, we have four vacancies on the authorities. Ward Two has one on the commercial development authority. Robert, do you know what the other wards are? I just have listed four people, four vacancies on the IDB.
They have 13 members.
There's four positions that are currently vacant. Ward Two has a CDA vacancy. It doesn't give the specific wards that Mr. Campbell provided me, but basically, he said he needs three positions to be filled for IDB and HDRA, and then one position for all three.
Okay.
All right. Why don't we do this because we don't know which wards are involved? Let's wait for two weeks on that, and then we'll post. I know we need to move on this, but I think that'll still give us enough time.
So it's open for two weeks, or we're going to open it in two weeks?
We'll open it in two weeks because we need to know which wards are involved. We don't know now, so. And lastly, is there a Ward One nomination?
Yes, Ward One would like to nominate Joy Beth Smith as our representative for the Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. And Mr. Burgett, if you will let that individual know, I appreciate it, okay?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. President, if I might clarify, she was the only applicant for the decision.
Okay, well, that's fine. Thank you for letting me know. All right, we've got two adjustments to, or additions to, the agenda. Let me share those two with you if I can. 091218, which is a request for consideration of an ABC 040 retail beer on and off premises, and 060 retail table wine on and off premises license for Mark's Joint LLC, doing business as Mark's Joint, at 2846 18th Street South, requested by Mr. Burgett, our acting city clerk, and that is new business other. The other new business other item is 101218, request for consideration of hiring legal representation regarding potential election results. And this is requested by, oh, who are we seeing is requesting this? It can be you.
You put Alex White.
All right, Alex White, I'll put Alex White. Yeah, I know you were trying to horn in there, Mr. Wright, but it's okay. All right, to my knowledge, that's the only two additions. Chair would welcome a motion for approval to the amended agenda. Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey.
Just one quick clarification. I'm sorry, that second item, is that a committee referral, or is that new business item?
No, that's new business.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that is approved. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mrs. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, we're going to move on to old business agenda. We've got several public hearings that we are continuing. We'll start with 191018, which is a public hearing for consideration of condemning the House at 1569 Valley View Circle, requested by Mr. Wyatt Pugh. Mr. Pugh, if you'd come forth and give us an update on this, and anyone else who might want to speak to this matter, if you'll sign in with our city clerk, and give your name and address, please. This applies to any public hearing tonight. Mr. Pugh?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just to remind you, we carried this one over from last time, based on the fact that...
Is your mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll get a little closer.
My hearing is poor.
Based on the fact that there was a new owner closing on that property at that, during the time of that actual meeting, there was a closing happening. So I've reached out to the new owner, Mr. Everett, and he is here this evening to speak to you about his planned improvements and a timeline for those improvements. He has taken out a demolition permit and has begun work on cleaning out the inside of the house, but I'll let him give you his timeline and his expected improvements.
All right, thank you. Mr. Pugh, we may get you back up here, so.
Sure.
Okay. And you are?
I'm David Everett, with Spruce House LLC. We own the property. Actually, we did not find out that Homewood was looking at it for condemnation until the day before closing, so the seller had kept us in the dark from that. But I talked to Mr. Pugh just before closing, and I said, we're going to jump on it as soon as possible. So we did pull the demo permit, have already started that, and are, currently, the interior is completely ripped out. Our plan from here is full systems renovation, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, exterior upgrade. Facia and soffit is rotted and needs replacement, some concrete steps in the front, those need replacement as well. So we'll do a full rehab on the property in three, three and a half months. We should have it ready to go and back up for sale on the MLS.
So your timetable is three to three and a half months.
For completion.
Okay, council questions?
I would just comment to make sure to keep the property secure during that time. We've had an issue with it being open, which poses a threat to the public, so.
I meant to mention that. Mr. Pugh told us about that as well, and the first thing we did was lock the back door. Obviously, we accessed the property through that back door when we were looking at it, so we all know that that was an issue.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So therefore, Mr. Pugh, your recommendation, if you'll share it, please.
Yes, sir. My recommendation would be not to condemn the House at this point, would be to give them an opportunity to make the improvements. I will point out that a neighbor who was also looking at buying it got a quote from Alabama Foundation Specialists for several thousand dollars for foundation improvements that need to be done, so I will ask Mr. Everett to get an engineer's report on that foundation system before moving forward with the approval of a permit, an actual building permit.
So again, your recommendation is?
Yes, sir, my recommendation is to drop, drop the matter.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? All right, we will close this public hearing. Any comments from the council?
It's dropped.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. McCluskey, we have a second from Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And that is dropped. It doesn't take a resolution, right, Mr. Kendrick?
No, sir.
Nope. All right, 201018, public hearing continuing from November 19th at 6:00 PM for consideration of condemning the House at 1627 Salter Road, requested again by Mr. Pugh. Mr. Pugh, if you can come forward and bring us up to date on where we are.
Yes, sir. Both Counselor Smith and I have attempted to reach out to Mr. Pears, who is sort of the caretaker of the property at the moment. He's not been available for any comment, and he's not returned any messages. As of today, there were no improvements made, and no attempt was made to barrier off the affected areas. I do understand, he's expressed that he's under some extenuating circumstances, but I would like it if he could possibly get that cleared, barriered off, I guess you would say.
I agree. Stand right there.
Yes.
Ms. Smith, any other comments?
I spoke to Wyatt today. As he said, both of us have been trying to get in touch with Mr. Pears, and I actually texted him, but I have no idea if he does texting, I don't have any idea. Anyway, he didn't respond. So Wyatt and I talked today, and basically, we're both going to tag team calling him, contacting him this week, and tell him that he has till next Monday to get it, the fencing put across the carport, so that nobody can access that where the roof is caved in. And if we can carry it over till next week, and then if we don't hear anything and can't contact him, we'll take action at the December 17th meeting.
Well, let me say, it is highly unusual to carry a public hearing through three council meetings, but if y'all, if the two of y'all together have a, what I would characterize as a plan of attack, I don't have a problem with carrying it over one more time, but we're going to take some sort of action on the 17th of December, so, all right? We will carry that over continually. All right, next is 081118, public hearing continued from November 19th for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 417 Crest Drive, requested by John Henderson. And again, we are continuing that public hearing. Mr. Cobb?
Yes, sir. The last public hearing, I couldn't get my pictures to come out, they were too dark. This is a photograph of where the fence, that row of hedges is where the fence is going to go, and I'll let Mr. Henderson explain that to you. And there's also, okay, there's another one.
All right, name and address.
Hi, I'm John Henderson, live at 417 Crest Drive. If you look at this...
Make sure you're speaking sort of into the microphone.
Sorry, I'm John Henderson, live at 417 Crest Drive. If you're looking at this picture, you see that red cylinder sticking up?
Yes, sir.
That's roughly, down further into the left, right there, that's roughly my property line from the road on that end of my property. If you back up one picture, also that same cylinder is there at, closer towards the driveway, and so the proposed location of the fence is three to four foot back from the property line. The bushes would stay there, and the fence would just continue all the way back.
Questions of Mr. Henderson?
I do have a question. Okay, so you're on the corner of Crest Drive and Salter Lane?
Salter Lane.
Okay, so this is the house right there, so you're talking about the fence coming up that side yard along the Salter Lane side?
Correct.
Okay.
And I do have two other fences that are in need of repair, so I'd like to go and do them all at once.
So you will repair the other fences?
Yes, all at the same time.
Good, thank you.
And the large bushes there toward the back?
That is not on my property.
Okay, so that, the fence will go inside that?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg, do you have a drawing of any kind?
I do in my office, yes, sir. I put all this stuff up here on the screen, forgot to bring them to you.
You just need to get it to Robert.
Yes, sir, I think one of the questions last week was concern about the fence along the roadside is the only thing in question here, and Mr. Henderson said he's going to put it behind the hedges so the hedges stay in place. That was one of the questions we had last week.
I see a couple people with questions.
Right. I may miss the committee meeting. What's the hardship involved, Greg?
On us, he's got a double-fronted lot, and so it's hard to fence a double-fronted lot. The ordinance reads that on a street side, you need to be 15 feet off property line, which would be at the back of his house, basically. In the past, what we looked at is to make sure there's good visibility for the people on the corner to be able to see down the street if you're pulling out, and because you see where his property line is, not a visibility issue.
Any other questions? Only because of Ward Four, any questions, Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
This is a variance for the send-back distance?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't make that clear, but that's what it is, a variance, a setback from the ordinance.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, thank you both, appreciate it. Anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? If not, we will close this public hearing, and welcome any comments from the council and our motions.
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Miss Smith, second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that passes 10-0, and that's Resolution 18174, and that's approved. Thank you. All right, 101018, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of zoning ordinance changes, and Mr. Wolverton is here. Mr. Burgett?
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you very much.
No problem. So we will open this public hearing, and again, I would say to any of y'all who wants to offer any comments, please sign in first with your name and address. Mr. Cobb, we don't need your name and address.
No. I was wondering if you want me to just summarize it right quick?
Would you please?
Or just pretend we have to read the whole thing, because it's pretty lengthy.
We like summaries.
I can summarize the changes, and there are not very many. In the definitions, we added sidewalks, driveways, parking pads, to structures, because now we're looking at permeable surfaces to avoid extra runoff. Then we defined permeable surfaces right below that, okay? Minor change. Second thing we did, NPD calculations, when you go to split a lot, had originally been set at 100% of the average to split a lot, and back several years ago, it was changed to 85, and we're putting it right back like it was written in 1986, I think was the year, to 100%. If you go to split a lot, you need to meet the average of the neighborhood, 100%. In that, we added that if you had an unusually large lot, I mean, really unusual, not off by five feet, or a small lot, you would throw those out to get a more true average. And the next thing we changed was front setbacks used to be the average of what's on the street within 100 feet in either direction, both sides of the street. We changed that to the same side of the street, and the reason for that, behind that, is on some streets, like Ridge, that are real steep, one side of the street's closed and the other side's pushed way back, and you don't want to do that to where you would have somebody using something down the street on the other side to mess up the look of the neighborhood. Trying to keep everything pretty much the way it was intended. The next thing we changed was accessory structures. You're not allowed to take up more than 50% of the entire lot with structures, nor 30, more than 30% in your rear yard with structures. Allowing a 5% allowance if permeable surfaces are used. Again, most of this is all based on trying to not have more water issues. The next thing we changed, rear yard structure 15 feet or less in height, have a five-foot side setback. If they're over 15, they have a 10-foot side setback, and that's measured from the lowest usable floor. Along with that, we put no accessory structures that exceed 25 feet in height, and that's the basics of what changed from the, rather than going through the whole ordinance, that's all that changed.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Any questions, Mr. Cobb? Mr. Gualtney?
Two questions, just to clarify, I might have missed it when you said it. The first was on the lots that are greater than the average, or excessively large or excessively small, what's the threshold for that? Is there one defined?
We tried to define that, it was kind of hard to define. I think it's going to have to be a judgment call, that's something that's really obviously out of character, and you have that every now and then, but generally, things are very similar. But every now and then, you'll find one big tract of land that's in that area, and we would, I think it would be something to be obvious that we'd throw out.
Judgment call by BEZ?
Yes, sir. Well, actually, I'd make that call, and then when they protest, they can take the BEZ and overrule me if they like.
My second question was around the accessory structures.
Yes, sir.
Maybe I misheard, but I thought we were rolling the accessory structures into the 50% of your...
They are in there. I probably didn't say it right.
All structures in the lot roll up into the 50%?
Yes, sir. Everything. And that is included, the first change we made, that picked up the driveways and the decks, that we used, patios that we used to not count.
So we are counting those now?
Yes, sir.
Good.
And really, this is based on water runoff issues we're having, where we're taking up, you know, large houses on small lots.
Right.
Which...
I understand. Any other questions, Mr. Cobb? All right, thank you, sir. We may call you back up.
I'll be right back, I'm next.
I understand. All right, anyone else in the public who would like to speak to this matter? You're, again, you're welcome to come forward, we're just asking that you sign in so we have a record. All right, we will close this public hearing, and I would welcome a motion and a second from the council.
Same move.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from Mr. Thames. Are there any other questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? This is an ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, it was written out as, I'm sorry, it was written out as a resolution, but that's okay. So first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, and I'll try to be brief. Mr. Cobb has done a good job summarizing, but it's an ordinance to amend provisions of Article Two entitled definitions to provide for a new definition for structure, to amend subsection A of subsection three entitled Development Regulations of subsection A titled NPD Neighborhood Preserve District of Article Four entitled District Uses, to amend section C entitled front setback modifications, to amend subsection four, subsection five, subsection six, to add new subsection eight to section D entitled accessory structures to all of the zoning ordinances in the zoning map of the development criteria of the zoning ordinance. Section one, the definition is, Mr. Cobb, there's amendment to read, a definition for permeable surfaces means an area paved with porous asphalt, pervious concrete, open joint blocks, or other materials designed to allow at least 50% of surface runoff during a typical rain event, and an underlying stone reservoir that temporarily stores water, surface runoff before it filters into the subsoil. Section two, section three, entitled Neighborhood Preservation District is modified to as follows that, as Mr. Cobb said, the lot area and NPD calculation now based on 100% of the average developed density and lot width of the recorded residential lots within the impact area. And subparagraph five provides for the exception he spoke about, about unusually large, unusually... large, unusually, uh, highly out-of-character lots would be excluded. Section three deals with the modification of the front, uh, setback modifications for the NBD district, and it provides for, uh, for the district that any corner lot with two fronts, one side may be set no closer than 25 feet from the roadway. Section four, the subsections four, five, and six, accessory structures, uh, section of the zoning ordinance is amended to read as follows, accessory structures shall occupy more than 30% of the rear yard space, and all structures shall be not occupy more than 50% of the entire lot, with an additional 5% allowed if permeable surfaces are used for appropriate structures. Uh, subsection five states a garage or car park is, is the only accessible accessory structure that may be located in the side yard, and will be required to meet the same setbacks allowed, applied to the house. Subsection six, rear yard accessory structures 15 feet or less in height shall have a five-foot side and rear setback. Rear yard accessory structures exceeding 15 feet in height shall have 10 feet side back, side and rear setback. Total heights shall be measured from the top of the lowest usable surf, usable floor to the highest roof apex. Subsection five deals with a, uh, a new definition of accessory structures, says no accessory structure or attached garage shall exceed 25 feet in height, measured from the highest roof apex to the top of the lowest usable floor. And all the provisions of the zoning ordinance remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I'm gonna assume that Mr. Waltney and Mr. Thames would make a motion and a second for unanimous consent?
I will.
Okay, there we go. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be, uh, ordinance 27-22, and the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Send moved.
Again, motion from Mr. Waltney, second from Mr. Thames. Roll call, please, sir.
Mr. Waltney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so 27-22 is approved unanimously, and we'll move on to the next public hearing, which is 31-11-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of variance to the sign ordinance at 1808 29th Avenue South, requested by Mr. Tom Koger and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department. We will open this public hearing and begin with you, Mr. Cobb.
Yes, sir, this is a request for an additional sign, right here on the corner, the new bank going in. If the sign is within our size limitations, it is just an additional sign. And when, uh, Mr. Koger gets over, I'll let him explain which ones, which, we got pictures up there.
And you are?
I am Cal Holt, owner of Knight Sign Industries and representing Trustmark Bank. What we're asking, uh, do you have other slides there? Now, this sign is already permitted, it's going on the front.
Yes.
Okay, there, on the side view that faces City Hall now, there is a, another entrance toward the front of the building that has a permitted sign set for it as well. At the rear of the building is another entrance. That's about, I'd say, 75 feet from the front entrance, but clearly at the rear of the building. And what we're asking is you to consider one of three options to go at that entrance. This is one, just the single logo by itself, which is only 13 square feet, or where the canopy is now, that's already in place, putting the letters above the canopy. What we're trying to do is just get some identification for the bank at that entrance, so there's no confusion to the public, plus there are services that you enter into from that entrance that are insurance and mortgages that are very different from the front end of the bank.
Can you specify what that is, or?
I'm sorry?
Do you, I mean, do you know what those services are?
Yes, insurance and mortgage.
Okay, I see, good, okay.
Their brand for, uh, mortgage is Trustmark Mortgage, and obviously, that's much bigger. Uh, their, their brand for insurance is the insurance name, which is much bigger. And we're ju, we're just trying to get identification there, so there's clarity to the people that, um, that are parking there, trying to enter the bank.
Thank you, sir, Mr. both. Any questions?
Could you lose the one that's facing City Hall and just have the one at the front and one at the back, and just not have the side, and that way you would need a variance?
Well, we discussed that, and the senses, consensus of everybody concerned with the bank was, that particular sign is more important than, than any of them, because of the view coming down the 29th.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Waltney.
Is the mortgage branch in the back connected to the bank in the front?
There, there are doors, glass doors between the two entities, yes. So if it was raining and you had to park over in this parking lot, you could go in the back entrance and make your way to the front, yes?
I know in our, in our special issues meeting, when we discussed this, um, there were some folks on the, uh, committee that felt like the single T, because it was smaller and not quite as large, like the other two signs, would be the more palatable option, um, just for what that's worth.
Yes, and our, our branding, marketing people agree.
And remind, remind us, is, is that gonna be lit? I can't remember.
Yes, that, that T would be lit.
They are gonna be eliminated, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, good. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, if there are not, um, we will, anyone else that wanna speak to this matter? Okay, we'll close this public hearing, and thank you all very much. Um, motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from this.
For clarification, there are three options on the table?
Well, I think that's a great point.
Okay, I, I'll make my, I, I would make a motion to approve the single T logo on the back of the building.
Uh, second.
Is this it?
Okay.
Yes, that's it.
That's the right one.
Oh, no.
No, that's, that, all I know is it's the one that's on the screen now.
Yes, sir.
So that's your motion, Ms. Smith, and that's your second?
I believe Mr. Wright said so.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed?
No.
Well, let's do, let's do a roll call, please.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, we did, yes.
Mr. Waltney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
No.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this passes seven to four, and this is, uh, Resolution 18-175, okay? And we'll move on to 32-11-18, uh, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 1136 Hardwick Lane, requested by Lauren Vander, and help me, ma'am, please.
Vanderbilt.
Okay, thank you, and Greg Cobb. So we will begin by opening this public hearing, Mr. Cobb, go.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a front yard fence, and, um, we've got some drawings of where it would go and what it would look like. I believe at committee, it was discussed that this was gonna have limitations on it as to, as, as the children get older, or if the house sells.
Okay, and you are?
I am Lauren Vanderbilt, and, um, owner of 1136 Hardwick Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we're asking for a variance based on a hardship. We have three children, all with special needs, um, all hard of hearing in different ways, um, and they are all under the age of seven. Um, so our yard slopes towards the street with no sidewalk. We also have a power pole in our front yard with three cables tied in. Um, so we are planning and would like to put in a three-foot spaced picket fence, just 15 feet off the house, to fence in just the front, front stoop essentially, around the front door. It would not come anywhere near the street, um, it would actually be at the 25-foot building mark on our survey.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Ms. Smith?
Just from our committee meeting last Monday, uh, Ms. Vanderbilt did, um, let us know she has, her oldest child has autism, and the two younger children are both hearing impaired and have cochlear implants, so, um, this is really a safety, a safety issue. Um, as we told her in our meeting, we are not fans of front yard fences, but in this particular circumstance, there is definitely a hardship that can be proven, so, um, we felt like in this particular circumstance, it was, it was warranted.
I understand. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Jones?
Uh, could, can you put up on where, where the fence is gonna go again? I'm, I'm confused, just, wasn't there another drawing?
It was hard to see.
Oh, well, we did.
Yeah, we're...
There was a drawing a minute ago.
There is a survey of it, and it shows it coming from the...
There we go.
Do you have that drawing?
There's another one.
Can you blow up?
So, can you just point out where the fence is gonna go?
The picket in the front comes off the front of the house between the front window and the garage door.
It's 16 feet off the front of the house.
Off of the front, so, okay. So it's gonna...
Basically, what it does is surround the front door so that you, it doesn't go to the garage, obviously, but, so when you come out the front door, the kids will not be able to...
Right into the street. Access the street.
So how, how many feet from the front fence to the, to the, to the road?
It's marked right there.
See the two dotted, uh, the dashed?
It's like 20-ish. It's gonna be 20. Basically, 25, it, from the street, it's gonna be about 28 to 30 feet off the street. See, the bottom line is, that's the property line, but the line below it is actually the curb line.
I'm assuming there'll be a gate?
There'll be a gate on the path, yes, where the sidewalk is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think that is, um, pretty explanatory, that particular rendering there.
Yeah, Mr. President, we talked about, um, proffering a limitation.
We did.
Um, I'm trying to remember what it was, as I said, it was a...
What's in the resolution?
Please, please, because that will remind me what time limitation we put on it.
It's my understanding that you would agree to this, this language. City Council does by adopting this resolution, grant a variance to the Homewood Fence, Fence Ordinance, to allow at 1136 Hardwick Lane, a three-foot wooden, a picket fence in the front yard as described in Exhibit A, which we'll, we'll need to attach. The variance is granted based on the proffer of the property owner to remove the front yard fence when the sub, which is the subject of this variance, if the property owner no longer resides at the property, or when the fence is no longer needed for the safety of the property owner's minor children, whichever occurs first.
Absolutely.
You agree to that?
I do.
All right, any other ques, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Wright. Any other questions? There, thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Greg, I need to exhibit, need that to give...
Chair would welcome a motion and a second for, uh, approval.
Do we close?
Move to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute. Let me, any other speak, people wanna speak to this?
Yeah, I will.
We'll close the public hearing now. Motion and a second, thank you.
I'm, I'm with approval, including the proffers.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Andrus. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is Resolution 18-176, and that is passed and approved. All right, uh, next item is 33-11-18, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 327 Kennelworth Drive, and we will...
Fence ordinance.
Uh, Kelly Handley has requested this, as well as Greg Cobb. We will open the public hearing, what? Huh? Fence, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. Fence ordinance at 327 Kennelworth Drive, and this is, a public hearing is now opened. Mr. Cobb?
Okay, this is very similar to the, the one we had first, is that it's a corner lot, so it's got two fronts, and their house, there's a survey there, is, um, only 11 feet from the property line, and the ordinance, of course, is 15 feet from the property line. What they'd like to do is, in the back, if we could zoom it up just a little bit, come, all right, so you go right down the property line, and there's a wall there that's on their property, and there's a bunch of hedges behind it, and, uh, they'd like to go down the property line and across the wall in the back. So this is the corner of Primrose and Kennelworth.
So the variance is, uh, it's within the setback, and it's a, due to a corner lot, it's in the front yard?
Yes, sir, that's what, that's what the problem is, you have two fronts on the corner, so, um, I think we also have a photo of it, if I didn't mess that up.
All right, Mr. Cobb, are you Ms. Handley?
Yes.
There's, there's a photo of the, that's the back corner of their house right there, and that block wall you see in the background is the one that she, we were referring to. Fence is run right in front of that wall. Their property is actually two, three feet behind that wall.
It's to the end of the shed.
Right.
It would not, it would be just that back section right there, or does it come all the way up to the curb, or?
It comes out, on the street side, it's gonna come down the property line on the street side.
It's about two foot off of the...
Yes, sir.
Yes.
If you zoom it out, you might, there's a curb line, you can see right there in the bottom corner, and the, and their property line is just a few feet behind that. You see the corner of the house is pretty close on that side.
All right, y'all gonna have to, go ahead.
It's gonna come along the road as well?
Yes, that's what the request is for, the variance is on the roadside.
Mr. President?
Count. Yes, Mr. Wyatt?
We're talking about the Primrose side?
Primrose side.
Not the Kennelworth side?
Not the Kennelworth.
Okay, so it's really, if you're looking at the house, it's the backyard?
Right.
Yes.
It's not doing anything with the part that's facing Kennelworth?
Right. The house faces Kennelworth, this, that would be the side in the back you're looking at, right there.
All right, any questions of either Mr. Cobb or Ms. Handley?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just, uh, to get Mr. Cobb to confirm something, that, my recollection, 'cause I asked this question in committee, and I think you confirmed this, the, the new fence will not in any way interfere with people's sight distances on any kind of driving activities, correct?
No, sir, uh, the next-door neighbors, right now, there's hedges that grow all the way to the street, and that, I probably didn't show them, go to my photograph, but, um, those hedges go all the way out to the street currently, so the driveway next door, can't see past the hedges, and the fence is gonna be inset by, from the street, probably looks like about, I don't remember what it said on the survey, how far it is, two or three feet off of that curb. curb.
It's about two feet, I think.
And Greg, I think it's important to note that the fence does not come to anywhere near the corner of Kennelworth and Primrose.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, 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 no.
No, it ties into that, it's going to tie into that back of the house, correct?
Right, right. Yeah.
Close the back corner.
So there's going to be no sight distance problem with people coming out of Primrose onto Kennelworth.
Absolutely not. It's going to be 75, 100 feet to Kennelworth.
All right.
That's the most important thing. We don't have any corner blind spots.
Right, yeah, that's what I was hoping to...
But they're all safety issues tied to this. I mean, this is a monumental situation. This is a safety...
Keep your dog and the kids in?
To keep the dog and the... Well, the... In privacy.
All right. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Are there any other questions?
You got proof of that, right?
I got the bills on my desk.
Thanks.
Close this public hearing and welcome a motion.
I would need to approve.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm giving him the resolutions. He should have been bringing the... 11-0, and it's Resolution 18177, and it is approved. All right, next item, 121018. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of potential economic development projects. Mr. Jones, do we have a report from finance on this?
Well, we do. I mean, we discussed it in finance and voted five to zero to drop it because it was put on the council agenda from the floor in the last meeting. So we dropped it, and that was already earlier in the agenda there. So I thought we should put it as a different number as opposed to the same number.
It has the 121018 number for the public hearing tonight. That was the number that was designated.
Got it. Okay.
Bruce, sorry, can you check your mic?
Thank you, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Brian. There's a reason. All right, let me open this public hearing if we can. Whom are we going to start with, with this particular item? Mr. Jones, since this came from you.
Do you want me to summarize?
Yeah, I mean, have Mr. Kendrick summarize, and then we'll have the hearing.
Mr. Kendrick, we need a summary.
Yes, sir. What we have tonight is a public hearing that's required by law to consider economic incentives for this particular project. There's a development agreement that's been negotiated with the city and their representatives, with the owners of the property, that would require, that would provide for the construction of a four-star full-service curio hotel by Hilton with an additional 10,000 square feet of retail facilities fronting 18th Street. And in addition, this, the development agreement spells out the obligations of the developer, all which, and it spells out the economic incentives to be provided by the city if the developer develops the property and it's opened as a curio hotel, and it provides for additional incentives if and when the additional retail space is provided for a maximum of $10 million for all incentives to be provided for the city over a 20-year period. What you have tonight is a public hearing that was published in the Birmingham News on November 25th that's required by law for public input and consideration before you could take any action to approve this development agreement. So that's the item that's before the council tonight, is the public hearing for the possible consideration of these type of economic incentives for this particular project, as spelled out in the development agreement that's attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, if you see fit to adopt that.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Now, is there anyone who would like to speak to this item? Please, don't hesitate to come forward. Put your name on the paper and where you live, and tell us your thoughts.
Hello, I'm Meredith Drennan, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Homewood. And Florie Shaboid is with me today as well. We just wanted to express our support of this potential incentive. We went through a really rigorous strategic planning process last year, and this kind of a development is very much in line with the strategic plan that we came out with. We surveyed over 500 of our business members, 80 one-on-one interviews with different community leaders, and in addition to not only this fulfilling the economic development section of the chamber's strategic plan, we also took a lot of time working on the heart of Homewood plan as well, and we felt like this very much exemplifies what all of the planning process that went through with that process as well. So we wanted to express our support for it. We think it'll do great things for Homewood. It's definitely, I think, a smart plan and something that the chamber is excited about.
All right, thank you. Any questions? They're leaving. All right, does anyone else want to speak to this matter?
Mr. Limbaugh, I think the developer needs to come forward and summarize his proposal, or someone representing them.
Sign in first, Doug. Sorry.
I'm Doug Neal with Daniel Communities and have had the pleasure of working on this project. This project has been thoroughly reviewed. The development calls for an approximately $50 million capital investment to be made in the city of Homewood to underwrite the development of a curio hotel and additional retail. Through the efforts of many on this council and the finance committee to reach agreement, the incentive that is being discussed to the developers being structured to help facilitate the economic viability of the project, given a number of things, not only of which land costs, construction costs, operating budgets and the like, to help make sure that there's a viable opportunity to secure financing. The project, over a 30-year period of time, after the net fiscal impacts to the project are expected to generate approximately $42 million in net new fiscal impacts to the city of Homewood over a 30-year period of time, assuming the development is delivered as has been proposed. Those projects and revenues will largely come from building permit fees, lodging taxes, sales and use taxes, and ad valorem taxes that support both the city operating budget as well as schools. Through the efforts of many on this council, this project has been looked at. The ability to bring a first-class, full-service lodging property to the city of Homewood, I think, will not only serve the community well, but likely will spur additional development in and around the downtown area.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Neal? Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? All right, we will close this public hearing. Welcome any comments from any council members who would like to speak. If there are none, chair would welcome a motion and a second.
I'd move to approve the development agreement pending the city attorney's satisfaction of the mechanics of the involvement of the Homewood Downtown Redevelopment Authority.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Walton. All in favor of this, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, we have two abstentions, so we have 902, Mr. Burgett. And this will be Resolution 18178. Thank you very much.
Ms. Smith, abstain. Who's the second abstainer?
Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to 101118. Bid opening set for December 6, 2018 at 4:00 p.m. for a police tactical van requested by Chief Ross and Captain Sutton, and we'll carry this over for future approval of these bids on the 6th of December. 180818, request for consideration to contract for citywide traffic study requested by Mr. Walton and Mr. Thames. This has been carried over before. Where are we on this, Mr. Thames? Mr. Walton?
Mr. Pugh, correct me if I speak out of turn, but I believe we have submitted Volker Engineering to Aldott via the letter, and we are waiting, we received the scope of work and the fee schedule from Volker, and that is with Aldott as well. Is that correct?
That is all correct.
Okay. So we're just pending an approval, sorry.
All right, so...
We've never authorized the contract with Aldott that I'm aware of. There is an agreement with Aldott about this study. If you recall, on the 19th, you approved the resolution for Volker, but at that time we brought to your attention that we still have an Aldott project for this that needs to be approved at some point. It was by a letter dated August 17, 2018, that Mr. Pugh sent me, that the city needs to authorize the mayor to sign.
So are you saying, Mr. Kendrick, we've already approved it as a council?
No, I'm not aware that you have approved under the item number 180818, the agreement with Aldott for this study. You have submitted the name of Volker to do the work, but based on what Mr. Cobb has sent me, we've never approved this agreement. Is that correct?
Right.
That's what he told me. At some point, as I mentioned on October the 19th, you're going to need to approve the Aldott contract to be able to go forward with the project whenever you choose to do that.
So when do we... Do we have that contract in hand now?
Yes, sir. You have a resolution I previously sent you back in October that would authorize the mayor to sign the Aldott agreement for this project, based on Mr. Cobb's forwarding it to me in September, August or September.
Mr. Bishop, can we get a signature on that? That sounds like what we need.
I'll be able to take care of that.
Okay. So do we want to carry this forward until we hear from Aldott, or do we need to...
We have the contract let's authorized the mayor to sign it. It's starting.
Well, I mean, I don't... Does that take a council action?
Yes.
Okay. Chair would welcome a motion and a second.
Same move.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Walton, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is passed unanimously. Do we need a resolution number for that, Ms. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
That will be 18179.
Yes, sir.
All right, 221118, request for consideration for adjustment to no parking on 26th Avenue South, requested by Brett Thames. We'll begin with a first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
This is an ordinance to regulate, further regulate traffic on or along a portion of the south side of 26th Avenue South for a distance of 90 feet west from the intersection of 26th Avenue South and Central slash 18th Alley in the city. Should be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park or permit to be parked. A motor vehicle owner along that portion of the south side of 26th Avenue South for a distance of 90 feet west from the intersection of 26th Avenue South and Central slash 18th Alley. Section 2, the violation this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor upon conviction. Section 3, the chief of police is authorized and directed to install markings that signify that the action taken in Section 1, Section 4, that any part of provision or declared to be unconstitutional, all of the parts not affected thereby remain in full force and effect. Section 5, the ordinance becomes effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval by the mayors or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Same move.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walton?
Yes.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So chair would welcome a motion. This will be ordinance 2723, and the chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Motion for Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so 2723 is approved unanimously. We'll move on to 021118, request for consideration to address the traffic, parking, and pedestrian issues on South Lake Shore Boulevard, requested by Ms. Smith and Ashley Condon. And first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city on or along that portion of South Lake Shore Boulevard between the intersection of South Lake Shore Boulevard and Columbiana Road and intersection of South Lake Boulevard with Murray Hill Road in the city. Should be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to park or permit to be parked a motor vehicle as described between the intersection of South Lake Shore Boulevard and Columbiana Road and South Lake Shore Boulevard and Murray Hill Road. Section 2, a violation of this ordinance should constitute a misdemeanor to be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the chief of police is authorized and directed to install markings as authorized by Section 1 above. Section 4, any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid, all of the parts remain in full force and effect. Section 5, that the ordinance will become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council, approval by the mayors or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Question, Mr.?
Yes.
President, along with this, out of the report from committee, they voted four to zero to recommend adding the no-street parking, but we also internally talked about adding lights, which I think will probably be brought to the finance committee at a later date. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Where is it from Murray Hill to where?
Call me in.
Yep.
Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Same move.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2724. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Same move.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Ms. Smith. Roll call.
Mr. Walton?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes, so 2724 passes 10-1, and the next item is 261118, request for consideration for making Re Street one-way from Central Avenue to Crescent.
Mr. Limbaugh, that's a typo. That should say Linden.
Linden.
I got them both, because it's been on there two or three different ways.
Linden. Okay, we'll start with a report from public safety.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero to recommend making it a one-way street. The motion was made by Counselor Thames, seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
All right, thank you. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic on or along Re Street to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle is defined in the Highway Code of State of Alabama, on that portion of Re Street from the intersection of Re Street and Central Avenue and intersection of Re Street and Linden Avenue shall travel in eastern direction only. Section 2, the violation of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor to be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the chief of police shall erect or cause or erect appropriate markings lines as described in the places described in Section 1. Section 4, the provision of this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council.
Thank you, sir. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Same move.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wyatt. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Wyatt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, this will be ordinance 27-25. Motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Wyatt. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Hesitantly, yes. And that is unanimous. 27-25 is approved, and we move on to the next public, um, let's see. The next item is 40-11-18, request to consider Huntington Road as a one-way, Peter Wright and Kelly Chopin and Jennifer Andrus. Report from Public Safety, Mr. McCloskey.
Yes, Mr. President. The committee met and voted four to zero to recommend adding this particular item to the traffic study that will be done by Volker. The motion was made by Councilor Andrus and seconded by Councilor Thames.
All right. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
I don't have a reading.
Well, because, okay. Well, in that case, um...
It was actually carried over, wasn't it?
Yeah. So, we're going to carry this over? Great. I agree.
Well, I mean, I would think we could just drop it.
Yeah. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for...
Why are we dropping it? That we're...
Because it's going to be added to the traffic study. They need to be separated.
Oh, I think we made it a separate, um, I think we made it part of the contin, uh, you know, we have them on retainer. It's not part of the citywide traffic study. I think we were hiring them out on our retainer basis.
That, that's correct. Yeah, I think Greg was supposed to engage somebody to take a closer look at it, separate of the citywide study.
Right.
And that's why it was carried over in the committee.
That's right.
All right. Well, we'll carry it over.
Right. We're not dropping it.
Okay. We'll carry 40-11-18 over. All right. 30-11-18, request to address the city council concerning the existing covenants for Wildwood North, requested by Mike Mosley, Greg Cobb, and report from special issues, Ms. Smith. There's something.
We set a public hearing for December the 7th.
Yeah, that's right. But the, the public hearing is set for December 17th. We're not discussing it tonight.
Okay. So, we set that public hearing for December 17th and go from there. Thank you. We'll move on. 29-11-18, request for, for reconsideration of removing a tree for homeowner in City Rottaway at 131 East Hawthorne Road because of setback requirements for proposed detached garage, requested by Scott Jenkins and Wyatt Pugh. Let's start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wright.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilor Gualtney moved to recommend that the city pay for the removal of the tree. Councilor Wyatt seconded the motion. The motion failed on a vote of one to three. Councilors Gualtney, McCloskey, and Wyatt voting no.
Okay. Um...
Please, Cobb.
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion from Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Wyatt. Um, any, yes, thank you. Any other comments? There being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 29-11-18 is dropped. 05-10-18, request to address Mecca Storm Water Issues, requested by Mr. Thames. Mr. Gualtney, report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommending funding of $16,500 from Engineering Services. Moved by Mr. Thames, seconded by Mrs. Smith. Five to zero coming out of Finance.
All right. So, that, we have a motion from Finance. Any other comments? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is going to be resolution 18-180. Is that correct, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
All right. And that is approved. All right. 04-11-18, request to consider surplus library items, adding items numbered 24-11-18 as well as 25-11-18, requested by Debbie Fout. Reports from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, and we combined all these items together because they were all part of the, the comprehensive list we got for surplus. So, we voted five to zero to recommend approval of those items to clear them surplus for 04-11-18, 24-11-18, and 25-11-18.
All right. Uh, Mr. Kendrick, first reading?
It's an ordinance hereby established to declare the following, describe personal property of the city as no longer needed for public or municipal purpose. The property is described in Exhibit A. First part of that is the library property. Then, the fleet maintenance has a 2008 International Garbage Truck, and then the Police Department has a 2007 Suzuki that's part of this exhibit. That the mayor and the city clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gualtney. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, this will be ordinance 27-26. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Wait. Mr., motion by Mr. Higginbotham, second by Ms. Smith. Roll call.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So, 27-26 is approved unanimously. And the next item is 17-11-18, request to transfer up to $1 million from the general fund of the Capital Projects Fund, requested by the mayor and Robert Burgett. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So, we have a motion from Finance. Do we have any other comments or questions? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous, and that is resolution 18-181. 18-11-18, request to transfer and deposit excess operating capital held in accounts into money market accounts with Bryant Bank, again requested by Mayor McBrer and Mr. Burgett. Report from Finance, sir.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to approve this item.
All right. So, the report from Finance carries the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is resolution 18-182, 19-11-18, request to transfer and deposit excess operating capital held in checking accounts into money market accounts with Iberia Bank, again requested by Mayor McBrer and Robert Burgett. Report from Finance, sir.
Uh, Finance Committee met, voted five to zero to approve this item.
All right. So, we have a motion from Finance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Limbaugh?
What?
Both of those items, Robert was of the opinion there was no resolution needed because it was just transferring from one account to another.
Right.
You, you assigned the rest. Well, he, that's what he said at the Finance Committee. I don't know.
That's correct. My, my mistake. I put the resolution numbers on there.
Well...
No resolution...
If, if we're going to do it with one, we're going to do it with the other. So...
Well, I don't have either because I was told that we don't need a resolution.
Okay.
Prepare it.
Fine. All right. All in favor of approval on, on 19-11-18, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, we have no resolution number on either one of those. 20-11-18, request to create and fund municipal court administrator position, report from Fin, uh, requested by the mayor and Mr. Burgett. Report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee vote, voted five to zero to recommend approval of creating and funding this position.
All right. Thank you. Does that take a resolution, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. Mr. Burgett's prepared one for the president.
Okay. And that's 18-182. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. 39-11-18, request for consideration for the mayor to sign a loan with Bryant Bank for the library expansion. My understanding is that the mayor has, um, and by the way, Mr. Wright is leaving. The mayor has not signed that yet, so we're going to carry that particular item over, okay?
Bryant Bank had prepared the documents.
Right. I understand. So, we're waiting on doc, uh, loan document preparation. Okay. Committee referral agenda, Chair?
Mr. President, can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was going to see if we could go back to 40-11-18. I just want to get a clarification. Do we need a council motion? Um, I think I was under the impression that we needed to approve it out of council for Volker to undertake that work based on the retainer that they'll be financed from.
Now, which one are we going back to, Ms. Andrus?
40-11-18, Huntington Road. So, what we did was we approved out of committee to hire Volker per the retainer on that line item in the budget. And I was under the impression that we needed to approve that out of council. Is that right?
Well, doesn't, doesn't, wouldn't it need to go to Finance? Wouldn't that need to be referred to Finance?
Yeah. I thought we were carrying over 40-11-18.
It is a question. Well, and that's, and that was, that was my question from earlier was if...
That's what the committee says, carried over.
Yes. And so, and then it ended up out here, which is why, because that should be done internally with, through Greg Cobb, through Greg Cobb's office in the engineering department.
And they have a budget for it.
Or Wyatt Pugh. And they have a budget for it. That was my, that was my assumption on why I thought it should be dropped. So, that's why I...
Oh, yeah. No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Have we cleared that up?
I mean, yes. So, Greg is going to, we're carrying this over. Greg is going to pick this up.
Yes.
Contact Volker. We're moving on.
We're handling it administratively.
We probably should send it back to committee.
Committee. So, we can keep track of it.
To wait on the, the results, instead of just carrying it over repeatedly out here.
All right. What do you just said?
The committee carries over, and the committee...
Okay. Well, but now it's on this agenda, so...
So, it shouldn't be here.
Yeah, I don't know. Technically, this isn't committee. It's not on council agenda.
Correct. There we go.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Back to the committee referral agenda.
Thank you.
Chair would welcome a motion.
Move to approve.
Huh?
Second.
Mr. Jones made the motion. Mr. Higginbotham had the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous and done. Okay. Yes.
I'm sorry. I have to, because I've, I've got the minutes from the committee meeting, and it's not listed as being held over. It's listed as being voted on four to zero to come out to council.
Yeah, that's what I was confused.
But we can still send it back to committee.
I just want to make sure. I think it might be safe for us to do it because some, the, the minutes are, if it's held, if it was carried over like Mr. Kendrick said...
That's what I wrote down. Maybe I missed it.
Well, that's what I wrote down. So...
I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure it's there.
The final decision is we're carrying this over.
No, we want to send it back to committee.
It was carried over to committee.
Okay. Do we have a motion to send it back to committee?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Thames, second from Mr. Wyatt. All in favor, say aye quickly.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I apologize.
No problem. 08-12-18, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of November 19th, 2018 through December 2nd, 2018. Mr. Jones.
Uh, Mrs. Smith is making this a December to remember.
(laughing).
Mrs. Smith.
It's car dealer talk.
It is.
Wow.
I, I could take that as a cheap shot, but I will not because I'm thick-skinned. Next.
Um, the bills were all in good order. I had a couple of very easy questions which Mr. Burgett answered, and I would say, I would move to approve the vouchers.
So, we have a motion for Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Thames. No, Mr. Higginbotham, thank you. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is resolution what, Mr. Kendrick?
182, I believe.
No, we, we did 182 on 20-11-18. So, that should be 183.
20-11-18 was 182.
Yeah, 20-11.
Yes, sir. You're right. 183.
183. There we go. Thank you. Next, the two added items. 09-12-18, request for consideration of an ABC 040 retail beer and 060 retail table wine on and off premises license for Mark's Joint LLC DBA doing business as Mark's Joint at 2846 18th Street South, requested by Mr. Burgett. Before we vote on this, Mr. Burgett, we have approval from both Fire and Police?
Yes, sir. We've got both approval letters in hand.
Okay. Uh, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Gualtney. I'm sorry. Okay, you'll do. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 09-12-18 is approved. Final item 10-12-18, request for consideration of hiring legal representation regarding potential election results, requested by Mr. Wyatt. Um, Mr. Wyatt, why don't you fill the rest of the council in just a little bit?
Sure. Um, because of some irregularities with certain ballots regarding the last election, I'd like to recommend that we hire legal representation to look into that matter and see what, if anything, might be in the city's best interest.
Is it possible to put a cap on that amount?
Go ahead and name it. And I...
If you go that.
Yeah. And I would, I would recommend, I'm sorry. You asked me a question.
Is it possible to put a cap on that amount, or...
Uh, I think it will be, but if it's...
Not yet.
I wouldn't want to do it quite yet. Uh, but I think we will be able to do that. And I would recommend that we hire Barry Ragsdale, who's experienced in that area and capable of handling that.
What firm is he with?
Sherodyne Perman.
Okay. So, at least one of our members might have to...
She will.
Two.
Two.
One's not here.
One's not here.
Yeah, that's right. I forgot he was.
He, he bailed, but that's okay. Um, all right. So, that's, uh, that, that's the request. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Ms. Andrus, second from Mr. Gualtney. Um, you know, to further clarify this, this, this gives us some real opportunity here on this lib bill situation. So, I'm certainly, personally, for pursuing this. So, with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is approved.
And I have to abstain. Sorry.
You, yes. So, we have, we have one abstention out of the 10 who are here. All right. Hmm?
Not, not, oh, 10.
10, 10. Please count me. Thank you. All right. Um, at this point, JJ, we, we understand the mayor's a little under the weather, but we, have you got any comments you want to make on his behalf?
We'll have one.
Question for JJ or for me?
For JJ.
Go.